Steve, do you have the opening statement?
I do, and I'm just, I'm using several monitors tonight, so if I appear to be looking away from you, you'll understand why. Okay, are we ready to begin?
Yes.
Okay, this is a, this is a special meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on March 30th, 2022 at 7:30 PM pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board and at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on March 25th, 2022, and has been posted to the municipal website, wwwprincetonnj.gov/meetings. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April, 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and ought to be maintained throughout the year, and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton. Notices have been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Okay, Claudia, could you call the roll?
Paulson?
Here.
Ten?
Here.
Davich?
Here.
Floyd?
Yeah.
Shriver?
Here.
Tenenbaum? Mr. Stein?
Here.
Donna? Jermaine Cohen?
Here. Okay, the first application is a carryover from last week, 420 Mount Lucas Road. It's, it's, application number is Z20-875, Block 4201, Lot 15, in the RP zone. So where do we want to begin? Mr., Mr. Kennedy, do you want to start, or?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For, you know, it seems so long ago, but last week we got through this application and I identified an issue with a piece of the driveway that historically has meandered off the property line on this particularly undersized lot. We talked about shifting the garage so the turning radiuses would make more sense or obtaining an easement. I'm here tonight to say that the, my understanding is that the property owner has, has worked out with their neighbor of the easement and will be, I guess, returning with that confirmation. I would ask though, because they haven't actually signed it yet, and it's just an agreement in principle that we, if it's, the board is amenable, carry it to your next meeting so that we can be sure that it's actually signed rather than end up with a condition that we cannot meet and have to come back to the board.
Mr. Kennedy, just a question for you. So if your clients are able to obtain the easement?
Yes.
Are they still proposing to reduce the width of the garage by two feet and shift it over by two feet?
So the, the, the two buckets of solutions were to reduce and shift some combination of those two, and then the east would, would not be required, or it could, as initially designed, but using the easement area as a, as a turning area, be, work without, without needing to reduce or shift the garage. So it sounds like we could, we can go as initially planned with the inclusion of the easement area for turning radius.
Can I ask a question, Your Honor?
Sure, yes.
Brian, could you submit us with just a sketch?
Of course, yeah.
And see what the easement looks like and take a look at it before?
Absolutely, you know, it, it, sorry, apologies, but it goes without saying that we, once it's actually ready to be signed, that we would provide that so that Derek and Jim Purcell could be comfortable that it actually works out. I was, again, reluctant to tell you here that we had it and have, and finish up with, without actually having it executed, but we'll, we'll provide that exhibit through, through Derek's office so that we can be sure that that's, that it's large enough. Obviously, you could, you know, with a large enough easement, anything is possible. And, you know, we'd like to keep it as small as possible, but we'll, we'll, we'll happily submit that prior to appearing back before the board.
Thank you.
I guess I have, I did listen to the tape from last week. I wasn't present at the me, present at the meeting, but I, I listened to the recording, and I believe you got through the public comment, and you made a closing statement, Mr. Kennedy?
That is correct.
And we, did we actually go into executive session?
Yes, these, these ideas kind of came up in, in, in batting around at executive session.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, I have a quick question. If, if you know the duration of the easement, anything about it?
So I'll, I'll tell you the one that I drafted and that it's being, you know, kind of presented to be signed. It's a permanent easement that would run with the land. It, 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 no, it, no, you know, it's almost as if it's, it's permanently deeded is how it's, how it's been drafted.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So Will, Karen, Derek, so the procedure neck, at the next hearing, or whenever this will be rescheduled for, would be to continue the executive session portion of the meeting?
I mean, I suppose technically we'd need, no, I, I, I don't know, you had Jim Chimalak justify originally. If there are questions about the easements, then I guess prior to the meeting, we'd let you know that. Ryan?
That's, that's fair. I'm sure we can make him available, and I'm just thinking ahead, he, he may be here for another hearing anyway, so. We'll, we'll certainly, if, if Jim or Derek have any questions, we'll be sure to have him available.
So I think, Steve, it's possible that there would be some testimony before the board, you know, resumed or took it into executive session to vote on it.
Okay, so there will be an opportunity to, to question witnesses again, or?
If, if that's the board's desire, we'd be happy to, to make them available. It's our, our hope that the easement will be simple enough that, you know, the, the discussion last time was that you, you saw on, on a map where it veered off the property and that it, that it worked with that, but perhaps not without it. And, and, but certainly, if that's, if, if Mr. Purcell and Derek direct us that it's not perfectly simple, we'll, we'll be sure to have Jim Kamalik, our engineer, available.
Okay, because I have, I have questions that don't pertain to the easement and that would pertain to some of the other testimony.
Well, happily have, if, if you need our architect available, Dan Fortunato, or, or any of the other, we had testimony from the, from the applicant as well, and a planner involved that, for not to have all of them, but, you know, whatever you guys need will certainly be.
My, my question would not involve the planner, it would involve the architect and the owner.
Okay, um, we'll plan on having them available.
Thank you.
All right, so then in order for the applicant not to have to renotice, we need to announce tonight a date certain as to where, you know, when we're carrying the meeting, to what meeting. So that would be the April meeting, Derek, is, or Claudia?
We have them, a meeting on the 27th.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. So carried April 27th. Same meeting time of 7:30.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we ready to go on to our next hearing? Okay, all right, our next application is case number Z19761. Karen, are all the notices in order?
Yes, the notices are in order. The board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Okay, this is 16 Madison Street, Block 28.02, Lot 39, in the R4 zone. Derek, could you summarize your memo?
I need to be sworn in, Ken?
Yeah, we'll swear you in the evening. You swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
A good evening. Lori Names is the applicant. She's owner of 16 Madison Street. She's requesting a time extension for setback variances and a bit of dormer addition. This was granted initial variance relief in February 26, 2020, and they were memorialized on April 29, 2020, and the publication date was May 2020. The applicant was afforded a lockdown extension as a result of the Permit Extension Act of 2020 due to the COVID-19 lockdown, and that extension ended on December 8, 2021. The applicant is seeking a 12-month extension pursuant to Section 17A213 as a result of being unable to obtain construction permits due to the pandemic. So the 2000, or 17A213 provides a extension. If the applicant does not obtain a construction permit within this 12-month period, the municipal agency grants, that granted the variance or approved, such conditional use may authorize for good cause shown, and in appropriate case, not more than one 12-month extension of the period for obtaining the construction permit. You'll note that the applicant did apply back at the, in November, and there's been a delay, and that's, that's been to some noticing issues, but I'll let the applicant's attorney speak to that. And that's the gist of my memo, if you have any questions.
What, yeah, one question. Would the extent, the extension run from December to this coming December, not from this hearing date?
Yes, sir.
From December, yeah.
Thank you.
Ken, can you, can you? Get your radio, there you go.
There you go, all right.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members and Counsel. I'm Kenneth W. Logier of the firm of Roselli, Gregor, Logier and Lozero. I'm here tonight on behalf of the owner-applicant Lori Names. As Mr. Bridger indicated, this is an application for an extension of time. And due to the pandemic, my client was unable to undertake the obtaining of the permit and, and start the construction, which was previously granted. So we're here today with the understanding that the extension would be based on the December 8, 2021 date, so it expired December 8, 2022. The, and I would tell you, the, unfortunately, my secretary, being fairly new, had used an old list, and as a result, there was one neighbor who still owned it, but had moved, and she noticed the wrong location. So we had to renotice, and I believe all of that has been cured at this time.
Karen, does that present a problem?
No, I don't think so. They, the request for the extension was filed in a timely way. It was filed before the period within which a permit had to be obtained. So, you know, the fact that there was a noticing issue, I don't think causes any problem to me.
Fine, no problem. So what's the, what's the, do you have, Mr. Logier, do you have anything else to add?
I, I don't. I think it's a fairly straightforward, and I had obviously discussed the issue with counsel during this whole process. So there's really nothing more, other than I wanted to just make sure that the board understood I was not seeking a year from today, but in fact, from the, the date of December 8, 2021.
No problem. Karen, how do we take that? Do we vote on this?
Yes, you do. I don't, I guess we'll open at the public comment. I don't think anybody's here tonight to speak.
Well, we.
Ask, so.
Okay, well, we'll open this to, to the public. If anybody here, anybody in the audience wants to make a comment, would you please use the raise your hands feature? Claudia, is there anyone here that?
There are no hands.
Okay, all right, hearing no one, we'll close the public portion of the hearing, and I guess go into, well, Mr. Logier, do you want to say anything before you went to executive session?
No, no, thank you.
All right, so let's go to executive session. Board members, comments, motions, questions, discussion?
Just a curiosity question. Why did your client have a problem with this when nobody else had seemed to have had a problem with this over the past year? Is there something more going on here than, than we recognize?
Mr. Vice Chair, no. I, I, I think that my client, between her job and being able to find, frankly, being able to find someone to do the project, it was, it, it just became, you know, they weren't available, and then, you know, obviously, we're getting down to the timeframe, and so we filed for the extension, and I can say that I've spoken to her, and I told her that she should have in line everybody to, to get started if the board approved the extension.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious.
Yeah, the, nothing extraordinary other than what was going on at the time.
Michael, did you have a question?
Um, no, I was rubbing my eyes, but I, you know, I had the same question Steve had, and I heard the answer, and all I would say was, yeah, encourage your client to take the steps, because it seems it's her failure. You know, it's, it's not, you know, construction codes of fa, of failure, so.
I, I would agree with you, Michael. I do, I do believe now that it's a difficult time to get contractors and materials, but again, there was plenty of time. Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's taken up a little bit of staff time, a little bit of board time, and.
I move we accept this extension.
I'll second it.
Any discussion of the motion? Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
I just have a question. Karen, can Mr. Stein, can Mr. Stein vote? He was not at that meeting back in 2020.
Yes, he can.
Ms. Paulson?
Yes.
Ten?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Jermaine Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, um, our next hearing.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
You're quite welcome. Okay, our next hearing is case number Z22-173. Karen, is, are all the notices in order?
The noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
Okay, this is cases for 508 Mount Lucas Road Block 4204, Lot 4, in the RA zone. Derek, can you summarize your memo, please?
Thank you. Yora Grifel is the owner of 508 Mount Lucas Road and seeking a side yard setback variance from the construction of a swimming pool, paper patio within the required setback. Property is located in the RA zone in the former township. The lot area requirements, 174,240 square feet, existing 106, 852, the lot width requirements 200, existing 184. Subject property is located in a suggested historic district which runs along Newey Street or Farm Road along Mount Lucas. Following comments are from the Historic Preservation Commission. I should address them. They had a question about the proposed aluminum fence. It's recommended to have a powder coat black finish, and they're questioning what the height of the fences. They had a question about the four-foot-high vinyl-coated welded wire fence to the exterior proposed on the exterior side of the existing building. Also recommended in black powder coat finish, and they recommend that the welded wire be installed on the inside of the fence, not facing the neighboring property or street, and provide a picture of the existing six-foot-high wood fence to provide a better understanding of what it will look like. They requested that the size and condition of the Norway spruce tree should be investigated to determine if it weren't saving, and the notes reference an existing landscape plan. She was requesting what is there, and is it being saved or relocated? So the applicant is proposing constructing in-ground swimming pool within the required 40-foot setback. Plans call for extensive landscaping, installation of pool equipment, hardscaping in an outdoor kitchen area. Requires the following variance. The required setback is 40 feet, and the proposed setback is 21 feet. The applicant has considered, requested consideration under both C1 and C2 criteria. And that's pretty much my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Board members, any question? Okay. Mr. Kennedy, I believe you're with us again.
You'll, you'll be seeing a lot of me this evening, unfortunately.
Lovely.
If we could, before we start, though, there is a, a person as an attendee, our landscape architect, he's known as S-K-A-T-Z in the attendee list, if we can move him over as we start, and as that's happening, I'll reintroduce myself. Thank you so much, Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Lee. Tonight, we're here to talk, as Mr. Bridger said, about a pool variance in an interestingly undersized lot in the RA zone. As you'll see in a second, this property is kind of a reverse flag with an even smaller not lot next to it. There unfortunately are, in this tooth of the RA zone that sticks into the R2 zone. Not quite sure why it was set that way. At, at some point, I believe these were owned by the Princeton Theological Seminary, and they were perhaps subdivided in this interesting way, but at the moment, we have two homes side by side in this RA zone. The applicant here tonight will talk a little bit about his need for the pool, why this is the right spot for it, and we'll be able to go through all of the questions that the HPC had. He's worked with his neighbor, who is supportive of the project. The fence actually, between the two yards, is going to be jointly replaced and double-faced. One of the questions HPC had was, gosh, why would you put the, the safety wire on the side away from, you know, from the house? It turns out that the, the pretty side of the fence was, is on our side of the lot because it was the neighbor's fence, but something they've worked out is to kind of replace the, the fence with two nice-looking sides, so you have safety and something nice to look at. And it's always nice when, when neighbors work together. So with that, if, if we could have Dr. Grifel and, and our landscape architect both sworn in, we could.
All right, could we have the name of your landscape architect?
Steven. My, my name is Steven A. Katz, landscape architect.
Both raise your. I don't know why there's an echo. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Will be truthful.
Yes.
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 Thank you. I'm gonna mute yourself. All right. As is our practice, I, I do have a set of exhibits that we had provided. If it's all right, I'd like to share my screen, and we can mark these as the applicant's exhibit package. All right, Dr. Grifel, if you could just briefly introduce yourself and, and talk about your, your ownership of the property and your, your connection here to.
Connection here to. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Yora Grifel. I'm a scientist and a developer. My wife, Hong Molin, is also a scientist. She's a researcher with Mount Sinai Medical Center in Manhattan. And we have two daughters, Annalee, she's a junior at PHS, she's 16 years old, and Caitlin, her sister, 14. She's a freshman, or I think it's more appropriate to say these days, fresh woman at the PHS. We moved to this neighborhood nearly three years ago from South Brunswick. I was captivated with the beauty of the place. It's a relatively new building. It has been built in 2004. Prior to that, it was a farm, a farmland or, or a red, there were about 10 houses scattered all over the place, some of them leaning against the fence that we are looking at. What, what brought me here is the beauty of the place. It has been built by the Theological Seminary. It was pointed out for the president. He lived here for five years, and unfortunately, he passed after that, and there was a new owner, and the new owner spent a great deal of effort and money probably to improve the, the very large backyard with a whole host of exotic and, you know, rare species of trees. So that is the background. That's what brought us here.
Wonderful, thank you. And as we'll go through our exhibits here, first, we've got the zoning map and.
Guys, please mute yourself.
See if that.
Steven.
Helps.
You want me on?
Can you hear him?
Can you hear me?
We can now, yes.
We can, yes.
That's, that's good. That, that seems to have fixed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, Dr., just, slide two here is the zoning map that arrow is.
Excuse me, one second, Mr. Katz. Just procedurally, you are testifying as a landscape architect.
Well, he, he will be. I, I, I'm happy to introduce him now. So, Steven, if you could give your, your credentials before we start any testimony of yours?
Yes, my name is Steven A. Katz. I'm a licensed landscape architect, state of New Jersey. The title block there has everything there, license AS000118. I graduated University of Wisconsin-Madison back in 1977, been actively doing landscape architects since the mid-'70s.
Okay, we're, we're good. We'll accept you. I just wanted you to put your qualifications on the record, please. Thank you.
Appreciate that. So I, Steven, I could ask this, I was gonna ask Dr. Grifel, but I'll, I'll ask you since we've got you unmuted. This, the arrow is pointing towards the property that we're, we're talking about here, we're going to add the pool to, is that, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
And as we'll note here, you'll see that that zone is RA, but it's this tooth of sorts that sticks into the R2 zone. And I'll be kind of an important note, we'll come back to later as we get through the, the testimony. Here on slide three, you've got a, a, a piece of the tax map that shows Lot. piece of the tax map that shows lot four. There's two-point-four acres where it is, as Mr. Bridger said, undersized. Next to it, lot three, also in the same RA zone, one acre. And outlined in yellow are the only parts and the only lots on this page of the tax map that are in the RA zone. So the RA zone is a quite a large lot zone. One hundred and seventy-four thousand square feet is required, two hundred feet of frontage is required, lot width of two hundred feet. Whereas the R two zone, which you'd see behind and to the left and to the right of this property is half that, an acre and a half zoning instead of three zones, three acres, one hundred and seventy-five feet in width. And importantly today, only fifteen feet of set-side setback versus the forty. That's the larger lot zoning calls for. Next slide is a survey showing the existing conditions. Steven, if you want to kind of orient the board to what this photo shows us, you know, where we're on the lot we're talking about?
Yeah, this is the right side yard. Looking towards the the streets, so from north to south.
Got it, and we're looking at the portion of the property, it's kind of the clearing where the the pool is proposed?
Yes, and then you can see that the fence on the left side is the right side property line.
You read my mind, and then that arrow there points to the utilities that come in, where the natural gas and things you'd want for the pool are?
Yes, that feeds the house.
Correct. Question, while you have this slide, is the tree is the tree that we're, the tree that the HPC was concerned about, is that visible in this?
The Norway spruce? That's
And Stevie, if you just describe which one that is?
Just take your arrow a little bit towards eleven o'clock, goes to the left, there you go.
That's it, the big tree to the left, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Now, now can you talk about what what this view is?
If you're standing on the Mount Lucas Road, looking north, the house is in the left, and you got, there's a fence right along the roadway, a little green area, and then you've got a couple of large trees. And then the pool is actually proposed beyond that, so you can't even see the area.
Got it. Next slide shows the, this shows the proposed location of the pool and the lot line in yellow, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Now, we've also drawn on here. Again, these are quite unique lots for the RA zone. The house next door to the subject property is located quite close to the lot line, but stepped forward, as if they were kind of almost designed in tandem with with this five oh eight being set slightly back. This is not what zoning would would speak to necessarily, but we just wanted to show that the buffering between the two homes themselves, as these were two, as these were both laid out, does fit and and work with the arrangement with one being set back and one with one being quite a bit forward of the house. So while neither of them will will actually maintain that forty-foot requirement of the RA zone, both would meet the fifteen-foot requirement, and both when you would do some kind of averaging exercise, which things they're actually close to from a proximity perspective, do meet that the forty-foot, you know, practical intent, once you once you step them and kind of Tetris them with their distance from the street. Steve, again, this is another diagram showing the the proximity of the house next door and the and the pool, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
All right, so next, if we could, if you want to take us through, I know the board's had a time to look at look at it, but if you want to take the board through the the highlights of the landscape plan that you've put together, both from a environmental perspective and a buffering perspective.
All right, let's start right in the middle of the house. Existing is a wood deck, it's small, it's got a lot of structural problems with it, it's rotted out. So the idea there is to have a landing, a tread, step down onto a larger hardscape patio area. Then to the left and the right, you have one step and then down to grade. Between that large patio area, you have like a goose neck, and we open that up, so adjacent to the house is a outdoor grill cooking station area. And then that little portion has flush freedom to walk right into the backyard. The pool now is nestled over on the right side and and also slightly behind the house. It's a free-form pool. It's got a couple little bells and whistles that people love today. It's, there's a sun shelf to it, which is a shallow area, and then there's a raised spot that you can see that upper circle area at about one o'clock on the pool area. Because the ground is slightly higher towards the right property line, the pool will have a little eighteen-inch-high retaining wall, which we call a raised beam, and that'll have some sheer descents come out for some interesting action. But that whole area is, is no walk-around there. All the pool deck is on the left side. So everything between the back of the raised beam and the existing fence, that'll all be heavily landscaped. There is that, if you barely see it, there's a dash circle that delineates the that Norway spruce that comes out. And existing right north of that is an, yeah, that comes out. And bring the arrow just a little bit up, up a little bit more, but right there, that's an existing blue spruce. So what I've done is I, mother nature comes in odd digits, so I added four more Colorado blue spruces, so that way you have a whole sequence of five, you can see that arc in there. Behind them is another very tall, handsome evergreen called Yoshino Kryptomere. That's kind of like in the notch in the corner. So from the fence will do its screening, but you still have a lot of evergreens that are added into it in order to keep the pool any noise or keep it screened out from the street in the woods, which is on the other side of the fence, of the existing wood fence. Now, the pool equipment's located just next to the house, near the existing gas and water meters. Thereby, that whole area will have its own special little privacy fence, only four-foot high, all in stone for all the pool equipment to service and run a gas line from there to the cooking station as well. Now, to enclose the pool, so it's it's got its own security, from the front right corner of the house, it goes at that angle, there's a gate, and then goes and will connect to the existing wood fence. And then in the back right corner of the house, the fence in the back right corner of the house, there you go, thank you, Ryan. It goes a little to the right a little bit, then makes a left turn. Now that we have a double gate, then it goes a little angle up to the top corner and then makes a hard right and reconnects to the existing fence. So the pool is all segregated out. Even though there's a fence that goes that circumference, the perimeter of the property, what's unique is when when they built the fencing, they put this kind of cow, what do you call that, Gioria, cow grate that comes in for your cars, so thereby any hoofed animal can't walk in, but that doesn't secure the pool area.
The kind of thing you'd see
Yes. Yeah, Gioria could answer that.
No, it's a, it's a made of pipes, some kind of grate prevent deer from entering the property for the most part, yeah.
Now, Steven. Now, Steven. Well, maybe, it sounds like we can't be both unmuted, so maybe, Dr. Griffel, if you want to mute yourself again. The fences in the the front and the back, those were something that the HPC recommended, they'd be a black powder coat, black finish, and that's something we're agreeable to, is that correct?
Yes.
And
Their pool code, and it'll be fifty-four inches high.
And this is, this this slide shows it zoomed in a little bit more, so that's here and then along this back. And on the right side, that's an existing fence. Moving to the next slide, I believe the picture on the left is the existing look. And on the right is what is upgraded. It's upgraded, what it'll look like?
Correct, they call it a shadow box.
Excellent, and in the current configuration, this is actually the look, you know, if you were standing in the pool looking at the fence, you would you would see this with the business ends of the fence facing the neighbor's property, because it ultimately originally was their fence, and the comments HPC had about putting the safety wires on it and being on the outside really goes away with the instead of that safety wire, to have a double-faced fence like the one we're seeing on the right, is that correct?
Yes.
Couple of things I want to ask you about. Just here, this this is a photo of part of the back of the yard, and just want to just briefly talk about, it's hard to tell from this photo, but there's a a kind of a scattering of ornamental specimen trees and boulders that are placed around the backyard, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, it's very unique, it's a beautiful, I kind of call it, it's a longwood gardens. A lot of very, very unique ornamentals were placed out there, there's big, huge boulders. It's very, it's very pretty.
And unfortunately, I'm going to back a few slides here to one that kind of shows the area here. If one were to put the pool, obviously back where my my mouse is showing now, that would really be more appropriate for the neighbor's pool to to be located. And then unfortunately, in this back area, that would interfere with the ornamental trees and other kind of serenity garden elements that are placed back there?
Correct, yes.
In addition to being further from the house and not near the utilities?
Correct.
And finally, just as, again, as a landscape architect, do you feel that we're cheating a bit, because I know the the neighbor has weighed in on this as well, but do you feel that it's adequately screened and buffered from the neighboring property?
Oh, yes. I designed a lot more to give a backdrop for the pool. So when you're on the house side and the pool deck, you're looking at all the all the color and the flower and the evergreens. As you look at the picture there, you see a very, it's a, this is a winner shot. So you could see along the the right side, the outside of the fence for your neighbor there, those are all evergreens. So that too is heavily screening from the neighbor looking towards Gioria's house.
Thank you. I believe that's all we have on direct, if if the members of the board have any questions, certainly happy to answer.
You answered my question on the location of the pool. I was wondering why you didn't put it a little further back and away from the property line, but I understand now.
Kennedy, are you going to have any testimony about the variances themselves? Or an argument to make anyway?
We certainly in in some nation, whether you would like to hear that now or or after the public speaks, I'm happy to to do it either.
Steve, do you want to hear from Mr. Kennedy now or wait till you have
It's, it's, it's up to you, Mr. Kennedy, when do you want to present your
Some nation after the public, that way we can address anything if it's raised then.
Okay. All right, so you have no more witnesses?
That's correct.
Okay. Board members, are there any questions? Okay, let's open this up to the public. Claudia, has anybody indicated that they'd like to speak?
There are no hands.
Okay. We'll give it a second. All right, let's close the public portion, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you for hearing us tonight. This is a a pretty unique piece of property, so we would ask that this be considered under C one or C two. These lots, these two lots uniquely toothed into the RA zone when perhaps they should be R two just don't fit from a from a size perspective. There is no land they could obtain from a neighboring property without making them not conform. So it, and the unique features of this lot, both in its undersized nature and all the extra property to the rear that is closer to the neighbor's property than this property, in addition to the benefits that you heard of having the pool in the desired location, which is proximity to the home, proximity to utilities, and not interfering with the existing landscaping, combined with the the lack of hardship here. You saw how these houses are spaced, the neighboring house closer to the street and close to the lot line. This house at five oh eight recessed back, they are well buffered and and no detriment either to to the neighborhood or to the the zoning plan in place. And and it does go to a more efficient use and of and appropriate density here. Some thought clearly went into the way these houses were spaced, one back a little bit, one forward, and this respects that by kind of Tetris-ing in to that gap where the the back house has been set forward. In that respect, it does still provide adequate light and open space, and then removes the need to, again, either locate the pool far away from from the living area and to interfere with the the specimen trees and gardens that are placed in the back. So again, appreciate your consideration here tonight for for the variance, and we'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions with Mr. Kennedy?
Maybe I missed it, but if you could do me the favor of just addressing the question about the Norway spruce that the the question that the Historical Society asked. Maybe you answered that before.
Steve, you want to do that one again? I think that the, we showed a picture of the two large trees, of which this wasn't one, but we did show, unfortunately, that one did have to be moved, but it was not the largest of those two trees that we looked at. Even what it says
Yeah, correct. The the tree has to get removed because it's leaning, if you left it there, it'd be leaning into the pool. And you got to put, you got to do the construction of the the pool, and the tree roots would all be compromised. If go back one there, no. No, no, go to the vertical one there. One more, there you go. You can actually see where the pool is in that green blob there, that one, that, yes, that one Norway spruce is just too close to the, into the construction of the pool. Now, if you look at the top of the pool, to the left of the pool, that's actually the shallow end, you see all those, those are four large Norway spruces that remain. And then way up in the front of the house, there's another very, very large one that you, that helps block the view from the street, that, yes, correct. But what we're doing is we're taking out that one spruce, it's in the way of the construction. All the, as they excavate around to put the pool shell, and then they got to excavate behind that in order to put in all the plumbing. The trees roots are going to be compromised, it will fall down. So that one tree comes out. And then as per my landscape plan, there's an extensive replanting and abatement of more evergreens and trees that are all being put all around the area to compensate for that one tree to come out.
Okay.
Kennedy, I had a question for you.
Thank you.
Just argued that meets the criteria for C one because they can't get land from any adjacent lots. I understand that argument with respect to lot three. And I assume your argument is that also applies to the lots that you showed on, I don't know which slide it was, I think the tax map slide for five, six and seven. What is to the rear of your client's lot?
Rear is actually permanently dedicated open space that's part of the seminary's Ross Stevenson Circle cluster development. So, you know, addition to the other properties being in different zones, there actually are several, I think the first cluster done in Princeton township back there, so that is owned by the seminary and and open space and can't be developed for or subdivided for this purpose either. It's, uh, there's an easement running to the town, Princeton's benefit.
I have a, a question about, um, uh, what would the plan be for, uh, when the pool might periodically need to be pumped out and emptied and where would that water be directed?
I'm, I'm not the pool contractor, but from all my experience designing pools and being around them, uh, in a very unique way, being in the pools, um, they don't pump the, the, the only time they're going to ever pump the water out of a pool is when there's going to be major reconstruction. So in other words, they're going to retile, replaster the pool. And then they got hydrostatic relief valves that are underneath if there's groundwater there. That's the only time that the, the water will come out. You never take the water out of the pool. Otherwise the groundwater could pop the pool and crack the shell. So there's all, you always have to have water in the pool.
I'll also say that at the time of construction permits, we would have to submit a, uh, a stormwater plan to address some of those issues as well, uh, if this were to be granted and proceed.
And also, uh, majority of all the pools today are all built in a cartridge system, not a sand filter in which you always had a backwash and all that water had to be thrown away to clean out your sand filter. Today they're all in a cartridge. You just take the cartridge out and, uh, clean and rinse that off and then put the cartridge right back into the container.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions from board members? Okay.
Um, yes, I do have a question.
George, you're, can you talk a little louder or turn, turn the volume up?
Uh, okay, as far as it goes, um, it's really a historical question. How did this the tooth of the RA zone get to be where it is, if anyone knows? Mr. Bridger, Ms. Casey?
No, I, I wish I knew the answer to all the zoning anomalies in Princeton. Good question though.
My suspicion, and this is, I'm not speaking on behalf of the, the seminary, but you know, the adjacent properties were all owned by the seminary and it was part of a larger development and I'd say this was the part they've forgotten, but that, that seems likely as well.
Okay, um, are there any other questions? For Mr. Kennedy or the witness or the owner? Okay, um, Mr. Kennedy, would you like to say anything before we move on to executive session?
Uh, no, other than I'll say, I, I don't think we need to reopen public, I'm not asking for that, but the, I think that the adjacent owner is here. Um, uh, I, I don't, I, I don't think we overstepped in saying that they've been working together. Um, uh, but I appreciate you hearing us tonight, um, and, and considering this, and, and thank you for your time.
You're welcome. If the adjacent owner is out there and does want to speak, just raise your hand and we'll hear you. If not, it's not a problem.
What we wish for, I believe, uh?
Claudia, did they indicate anything?
Yes.
Yes?
Down.
Okay. They have to be unmuted and sworn in, I believe.
Correct. We need to see them though. They can get their video on. Okay. Ms. Stone, could you first give us your address, please?
Yes, it's 516 Mount Lucas Road.
All right, and we're going to swear you in. You swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Please make your statement.
Well, I just wanted to say that as has been discussed here, uh, my husband and I are very much in agreement with all of Mr. Griffl's plans. We think they're great. He's been very considerate of our needs. And we would certainly recommend you accepting his application.
Excellent. Very nice. Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you for speaking. Okay. Um, all right, so we're back to where we were. Mr. Kennedy, we're about to go into executive session.
Uh, nothing, nothing more to add from me. Thank you.
Okay, good. All right, let's, uh, let's go into executive session. Are there any questions, comments or motions? Well, I can say I, I had a question initially about the placement of the pool, but I understand it was Mr. Katz did testify to that and make it's a very valid, uh, decision. I think the landscape plan provides a, a very good buffered screen with the adjacent neighbor in addition to the screen that already exists on the neighbor's property. And, um, I think it's nicely done. Anyone else like to say?
I'll move to approve it.
Thank you. I'll second that.
One question as a C1 variance or a C2?
Would one or the other be more appropriate, do you think?
Well, I mean, they don't have to be mutually exclusive. Uh, with C2, remember you don't have to demonstrate hardship. But, um, the board needs to kind of identify then what, what, what purposes of zoning do they think would be advanced by this? Uh, I think Mr. Kennedy argued, uh, maintaining appropriate density, um, now there's, there's promoting the, you've heard these at many meetings promoting the appropriate use of land, uh, given its zoning for residential, adequate light, air and open space. These are all kind of very general purposes, but, um.
Yeah, I mean, maybe the C1, because with the odd, uh, flag shape.
The lot and its size.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, who, who seconded it? Was it you, Jim?
I did, yes.
Good, okay, thank you.
Is there any discussion of the motion? Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll? Derek, did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
I just wonder if we could encapsulate in conditions the applicant's agreement to powder coat the fences and uh, replace the wooden fence, if that's the correct action.
Yeah, I think it's a very good idea.
Those are both agreeable.
I think that's it.
Okay. Claudia?
Paulson? Yes. Ben?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Jeff Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Damon Cohen?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next hearing is case Z22-176. Karen Dewey, is everything in order?
You do, the noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. This case is, uh, 178 Linden Lane, block 7302, lot 10 in the R8 zone, formerly in the township. Okay, Derek, can you summarize your memo?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Elbrook Homes LLC is the owner of 178 Linden Lane. They are seeking C1 and C2 variances to permit the construction of a new home on a lot in exception to require lot area. Bulk variances for side and rear yard setbacks are requested constructed detached garage in exception to ordinance requirements. Subject property is located in the R8 zone in the former Princeton Township, uh, land use ordinance. Um, the existing single family use is permitted as right. The existing lot area requirement is 8,500 square feet. The subject lot is not complying with regard to the 6,250, uh, square foot lot area. Subject property itself is not complying with regard to the eight foot required right side yard setback. The existing is one foot. Um, it's also not compliant with the left side yard requirement, which is eight feet. The existing is 4.7. And there's a combined side yard requirement of 20 that it's not compliant with in the existing's 5.7. Uh, variance was granted back in 1975 to permit a carport addition in exception to the required side yard setbacks. The current project envisions demolishing the existing single family home and constructing a new 2,300 plus or minus square foot, single family home with a detached single car garage. The home will have a full basement, kitchen, living room, dining room, family room, four bedrooms, three bedroom pass and a finished attic. And the proposed detached garage, as I mentioned earlier, will approach into the, uh, rear and side yard setbacks. The following variances are required. There's a lot area variance required. Mentioned earlier, 8,500 square feet is required, existing 6,250 square feet. Um, the rear yard setback requirement is 15 for the garage. The proposed setback is five. And the side yard setback for the garage, uh, is eight, required and proposed is five feet. The applicant should, uh, advise if they have approached any land owners to determine if they have any, uh, plans to sell or cure the lot deficiency. That's my memo.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kennedy?
Uh, thank you. Um, if we could also, uh, our engineer, uh, which we'll need for the next two applications, Mark Katerniak. If we could, uh, have him moved over. But as, while he's doing that, uh, or while Claudia's doing that, I'll say, uh, as usual, uh, Derek's memo had it right. This is a undersized lot in a neighborhood where almost every one of the lots is undersized. We'll, we'll show you uh, unfortunately how that works. It's just, you know, zoning is a broad brush and this section of, uh, of Linden just does not comply. Uh, both neighbors on either side are also non-compliant. The property behind it is a, uh, public school. Uh, so we, we couldn't obtain property from any neighboring, uh, users to make it more compliant without, uh, removing their, um, you know, making them less compliant or frankly, taking a chunk of their home away, uh, because of the way these are structured. Uh, the other variances that we're asking for, for the rear detached garage, uh, we think that's just, uh, on a, on, on lots like this in this neighborhood, it's just better, better planning. Um, uh, this property again backs to, uh, a, a public school. Um, and having it closer to the school, it doesn't create the, avoids this kind of dead area of, and said acts as a buffer, um, to the, uh, the property behind it. Um, so, uh, as we get started, I guess I'd like to have, uh, the, the owner's representative, uh, Robert and Mark Katerniak both be sworn in if we could.
Mr. Hirschberg, just to confirm, you are the managing member of Elbrook Homes, which is the owner and applicant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And Mr. Katerniak, you're a PE in the state of New Jersey, correct?
That's correct.
All right. We'll just swear you in now. You both swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Rob, just very briefly, want to just introduce yourself. Uh, I, I, I got a kick out of the way, uh, uh, the, where the Elbrook Homes came from and, uh, I know you're a Princeton person, so, uh, uh, if you want to introduce yourself, uh, to the board, uh, you know, you're not someone from, from out of the area coming in to, to do this project, that's for sure.
Sure, my pleasure. Thank you everyone for having me. Um, so like Mr. Kennedy said, my name is Rob Hirschberg. I'm a, a member of the community. I live over here on Dodds Lane. Uh, we've formed an LLC called Elbrook Homes after my two daughters. I have a nine-year-old and a six-year-old who also attend, uh, Little Brook School System, uh, which is really where Elbrook came from. A little bit of house in the house and just everyone would like it.
Um, and also just real briefly, it's not really part of the application, but, um, uh, it, it, you do have some green elements planned for this, uh, for this project. Do you want to just real quickly go through what, what you have planned for, for, for this home?
Sure, absolutely. So just as a father, right, I do my best to teach my daughters, uh, good habits, good sustainable practices and civil duty. Uh, so part of the project, uh, for the first application and, and actually the second application, uh, we have elements of second chance, uh, being partners in this project to do training, um, job sites where they'll deconstruct the home. We use every ounce of materials that they possibly can rather than putting it into the landfill.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. Um, uh, Mark, um, if you want to introduce, uh, yourself, I know we, we've got a small fraction of your credentials, um, but um, if you want to give the board the benefit of your background, I know you're only recently getting back into private practice, having uh, been the zoning officer and, and staff engineer for Hopewell Township around the corner for, uh, less time than I would appreciate. And I'm, I'd like to see your practice, but I like to there better, I'll be honest. Um, uh, but if you want to introduce yourself to the board and give your criteria, so have you, uh, accepted as a expert engineer?
Sure, thank you. Uh, good evening, members of the board. My name is Mark Katerniak. I'm a, um, licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing, uh, engineering for over 25 years. Um, my license is, remains in good standing. A graduate of, uh, New Jersey Institute of Technology with a degree in civil engineering. That's a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. As Mr. Kennedy indicated, I was formerly the in-house, uh, director of community development and zoning officer for Hopewell Township. Um, moving back into the private sector, I was in private sector development for over 25 years, uh, as a consultant for both development and representing municipal boards, um, land use boards and, uh, planning boards.
We will accept you as a, as a, not to interrupt you, you're on, you're on a roll, but yeah.
I didn't even mention superior court and all those other good things, but, uh, yeah.
Thank you. Um, uh, so I'm going to share my screen with our exhibits and, and Mark and I, we can start, um, walking them through, orienting the board to 178, uh, oh. So Mark, here, this is, uh, I, I guess a piece of the zoning map here and is that, uh, the property with the blue arrow and, uh, what's that behind us there? The?
Yes, that's, that, that's correct. I'm going to, uh, yes, that's correct. For, for reference purposes, um, I'm going to refer to Linden Lane as running east-west, so I'm going to refer to the south side of Linden Lane just for simplicity. But, uh, as we go forward, but that is the zoning map and we have bought the school as Mr. Kennedy had indicated, uh, we do, um, we do require, um, uh, we have an existing undersized lot. It's undersized for area. It is compliant for a lot width and lot depth, a lot frontage and lot depth. Um, in looking at the, um, the adjacent properties, um, as Mr. Kennedy had also indicated, most of the lots along Linden Lane are undersized. In this particular area, um, we have a property to the west, which, um, is slightly larger than the minimum area size. However, in order to, assuming we're holding the back line of the school, if we were to try and purchase property from the adjacent's lot 11, we would need 18 feet, which would cut us about a third of the way into the adjacent house. Um, the property to the east is at its minimum width and depth, so it is also non-compliant, similar to this one. Um, at its minimum width and depth. And I will notice that, um, with the exception of the lot to the west, the lot to the east also has non-conforming side yard setbacks for the existing structure. The existing structure we intend to demolish here, um, is non-compliant for side yard setbacks on both sides, both individually and combined. Um, the proposed structure that we, uh, are requesting approval for, um, respects the side yard setback requirements, um, on both sides, uh, for the proposed principal structure. The variances we are seeking relief for pertain only to the accessory, uh, single fam, a single car garage, uh, which is a five foot side and rear yard setback where the required side yards are 15 feet and excuse me, rear yard is 15 feet inside is five feet for the garage. Uh, we are proposing five for both the rear and side. And really the, the rationale reasoning for that, um, is to provide as the arrow indicates on this exist, on this screen, uh, the arrow indicates sort of a straight shot for the driveway, um, into the Into the garage as well as a reasonably. A reasonable area for a vehicle turnaround exiting the garage to then traverse out to Linden. Lane in a in a forward direction, if we were to place the garage in a compliant. Location for rear and side yard. Mostly rear, we would end up as with Mr. Kenny had said, we'd end up with a lot of dead space in the back of the yard, we would also. Reduce the the distance between the principal dwelling and the and the garage, leaving. Less maneuverable room for for a vehicle to exit the garage and and sort of K turn out of the driveway. Would also most likely require additional impervious coverage to sort of elongate that turnaround that we would need. So in order to provide some usability for the backyard itself. Keep the impervious surface to the absolute minimum. We were proposing to sort of place the garage as close to the corner and in a straight line with the driveway. That that we're showing on our sketch. The 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 positioning of the the garage or or the. The position of the house as well is really a result of the fact that the the lot is undersized for area. We are otherwise compliant, as I mentioned, not only is the principal dwelling compliant with all the setback requirements, we remain compliant with. The lot coverage, the impervious coverage requirement for the lot, there's a slight increase, but we are remaining compliant with what's permitted in the zone. Our increase in impervious coverage from existing to proposed condition does not trigger your stormwater ordinance for mitigation.
Thank you, Mark, so of the of the two sets of variances here. One is the the lot areas, your your classic C one. Hardship, this is an existing undersized lot, and and then would you, would you. Look at the garage modifications as being C one and C two, what's your thoughts there?
Um, yeah, I would say probably C one and C two, again, the. Again, a lot of it has to do with the uniqueness of the lot, really because of the narrowness of the lot, although the lot is is compliant from a from a width standpoint. It is a narrow lot for the construction of a single family house, that is, since it's not compliant for area. And we want to orient the garage and driveway in such a way where we have a logical and straight access to the garage. We are maintaining adequate light air and open space with both the compliant setbacks for the. The principal dwelling and the positioning of the garage. To the rear of the property adjacent to the open school property, so we have adequate light air air and open space to the rear. And sides of the property with respect to the garage.
Thanks, Mark, one one last question, and we we said this before, but the the property directly next door, even though it is oversized. It would not be possible to get enough. Property from them by subdividing it and changing the lot line without making them also noncompliant, is that correct?
Yeah, and actually, if you were to make the area compliant by. Relocating the the lot line to the west, you can see the existing setback to the the adjacent structure there, we would end up. We would have to actually have to put the lot line in the house, we would be we would be encroaching the house by approximately. Approximately six feet, we'd have to put the lot line six feet into the existing dwelling, if we were to come up with a compliant lot area. If we were to say split the difference and try to bring this lot closer into conformity, but not completely into conformity. We would end up with creating a noncompliant side yard setback for the existing house on the adjacent lot.
Excellent, well, not excellent, but thank you. With that, if anyone has any questions for our engineer or applicant, we'd certainly be be happy to to answer them at this time.
Board members. No questions. Okay, next.
I'm sorry, I do have a question.
Oh, sorry, George.
Yeah, which is. I I just looked at the floor area ratio calculations where. By the ordinance, one thousand eight hundred seventy eight is permitted.
Can you speak a little louder, George, it's very hard.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about floor area calculations and the. By the ordinance, one thousand eight hundred seventy eight square feet are permitted with a thirty percent. For every ratio, as I understand it in this zone. And then there's a notation that the adjusted. For error ratio, well, the adjusted square feet is two thousand three hundred sixty four. Square feet, which by my calculations goes to thirty seven point eight percent of the. Of the lot area, so that strikes me as. Interesting, and I'd like to know what led into that calculation.
Mark, you want to go into this, this is a, for an undersized lot, the proportional F A R rules would apply, so maybe want to. I don't know if you did that one, but.
I I did, that that is correct, yeah, for the undersized lot, we are permitted to proportion, to calculate a proportional F A R. Based on the ratio of the existing lot, the 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 permitted lot area to the existing lot area. So we we do comply with the required F A R. If we are to take the pro rated floor area calculation permitted by the ordinance. So while it while it does, while it does increase based on the adjusted F A R. We are permitted to 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 increase that F A R based on the on the ordinance required.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, Mr. Kennedy, anything else?
Just again, thank you, this is your your classic undersized. Lot variance that you 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 hear quite a bit, you know, I think you saw. This neighborhood is particularly unique, it's not just a couple that don't comply, it is almost all of forty one out of like forty four. Think we calculated when we we painted them all. It's it's a function of zoning being general and and not being a micro. Scalpel to each particular block or neighborhood, unfortunately, anyone on this street would need to come in for these types of variances. Absent a few outlier compliant sized. Lots who don't have enough to spare for anyone else to become compliant, that's for lot area. And I think you heard about the the detached garage, the location just makes a little bit more sense from a maneuverability perspective and. The very unique. Situation that these lots on this side of the street, back to a public school and almost. Ax, it's not something that needs to be screened from the residential use. It is a use that the residential house needs to be screened from and and putting the garage closer to the back. Provides some of that screening and avoids creating this kind of no man's land where no one's really going to want to be using a yard. In a fifteen foot space between the schoolyard and the back of a garage. Again, thank you and happy to answer any questions that you have, board members of public.
Board members, any questions? Okay, hearing none, I will open this up to the public. Claudia, has anyone indicated their desire to speak?
There are no hands.
Okay, I'll close the public portion, Mr. Kennedy, anything you'd like to add before we go into executive session?
Nothing else, just again, thank you for for considering this one, this back to your more. Classic kind of hardships that you're used to hearing, but again, thank you for your time tonight.
You're welcome, okay, we're going to executive session, board members, comments, questions, motions.
I like the fact that the design, exterior design does not seem to overwhelm the neighborhood. And, you know, it seems, while it is a new house, it is not a. Overburied house.
I agree with you, I think it's nicely done. Any other? Comments, anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move, I'll also move with a C one variance.
Yeah, I'll I'll second that, I think it's, I think it's well done, I think that the with the size of the lot and the constraints that they're under, I think they. The design of the house and the placement is makes sense, and I think that the position of the garage, although it's in the setback, I think it's. Really the best solution you could come up with, so I'd second.
Okay, are there any questions of the motion? Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll?
Olson?
Yes. Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Goen?
Yes. Thank you. Why are none of the faces changing, okay? Our next case is Z twenty twenty two. Dash one seventy seven. Aaron, is everything in order here?
Noticing is in order, board has jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you, okay, this is for one ninety eight Linden Lane, block seventy three. Oh two lot fifteen in the R eight zone. Mr. Bridger, can you summarize your memo, please?
Sir, thank you. Like I'm repeating myself, one ninety eight Linden is done by one ninety Elbrook Homes. Owner applicant seeking C one and C two variance. Relief to permit the construction of a new home on a lot in exception to the required lot area. Both variances are required for side and rear yard setbacks to permit a garage in exception to ordinance requirements. Subject properties located in the R eight zone in the former township. Lot area is noncompliant, requirements eighty five hundred, existing's sixty two fifty square feet. Side yard setback is noncompliant, requirements eight, the existing's five point seven, that's on the right side, the left side's. Also noncompliant, requirements eight and existing's five point one feet. Combined side yard setback is. Twenty feet and the existing is ten point eight. And the applicant is seeking to demolish the existing house and construct a approximately new twenty three hundred square foot, single. Family home with a detached, single garage. Those home will feature full basement, kitchen, living room, dining room, family room, four bedrooms, three bathrooms and a finished attic. The variances that are required are for lot area, the requirements eighty five hundred, the existing six thousand two hundred fifty, there are two. Similar variances to the last application for the garage setback, the rear yard setback requirement's fifteen, proposed is five. And the side yard requirement is eight, proposed is five. That's a synopsis of my memo, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Now, for something completely different. Tonight, the ownership of one ninety eight Linden Lane is the same as one seventy eight, and I appreciate. For everyone's time here tonight, that Derek and Claudia and everyone scheduled these back to back because. They are essentially the same neighborhood, the same street, different house designs, this is not the same house being built at two different lots. But the same constraints that the neighborhood has, I have the same set of witnesses, both previously sworn. Mark Katerniak, our engineer, and Rob Hirschberg, our owner, as the principal. Karen, is it all right if we remain sworn, should we swear them in again?
No, that's fine, gentlemen, you remain under oath, that's fine.
Thank you. Rob, the the board heard you before about your your story and perhaps can take notice of. The compelling local nature of yourself and the interesting way about your. Kids and schools names made its way into company name, anything particular about this home that you want to add in terms of green? Design, I believe, I I thought I heard about an E V charger, but maybe things that you're considering for this property, if 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 anything.
Thank you again for having us, again, my name is Rob Hirschberg, and so for anyone who has more than one child. Near an age, you understand that two siblings tend to fight. So what happened in our house is we had a little bit of an argument. So in our house here, we had an argument and now we have a second house called one ninety eight. This house will be slightly different, where we'll have solar panels and E V chargers as well. To continue on with our civic duty as well as the same second gen partnership to provide on job training, deconstruction. To ensure that we do minimal waste as possible.
Excellent, and Mark, your. First, I'd like to, with the credentials previously put on the record, I know he's testified before this board before, as recently as two minutes ago.
I assume your license is still in order, so.
Moment here and I'll put our one. Set of exhibits, we'd like to have marked this evening, if I can. After having done it six times tonight, I'd be able to to get the right view up, apologies. Share my screen here. Mark and I can orient you, the board, to this part of the street. Looks very similar to what we're looking at before, but it is several lots down. Mark, this does the same constraints with the school behind it, is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Here's the variances that are required and the existing variances that we're, you know, essentially. Curing or or fixing by some of these, for example, combined side yards. Edition where we're helping with.
That that's correct, the the existing lot area, not to sound repetitive, but the existing lot area is undersized. The the lot is compliant with lot frontage and lot depth, but is undersized for area. The existing principal dwelling on the property is currently noncompliant with both. Individual left and right side yard setbacks as well as combined side yard setbacks. The proposed dwelling, the principal structure itself will be compliant for both side yard setbacks. But the proposed detached garage at the rear of the property will be not compliant with five foot. Rear setback where fifteen's required and five foot side yard where eight feet is required. The, in looking at the adjacent properties and the area, as Mr. Kennedy had indicated. You see highlighted the number of lots on Linden Lane that are not compliant. For area, this particular lot is situated in such that it is flanked on either side by lots of the same size. Both, all all three lots can reach fifty foot wide by one hundred twenty five feet deep, so we are unable to. Adjust the area of the subject lot without making the existing noncompliant lots even more noncompliant. And as you can see from the image here too. In looking at the adjacent lots to the, I'll say, east and west for easy ease of reference purposes. Both dwellings on the adjacent lots are on undersized lots for area as well. And have noncompliant side yards themselves. The one with the carport does have one lot that has a compliance yard, but for the most part, each one has at least one noncompliant side yard. By removing the existing structure on the subject property and replacing it with a structure with. Compliance side yard setbacks, we are increasing the light air and open space between the existing dwellings on either side with that have substandard side yards. Again, with this particular property, similar to the last application we presented, we oriented the house with a. Within the with the within the required footprint for the principal structure, we've located the garage. In a straight alignment with the driveway and positioned the garage at the rear corner of the lot. For the purposes of maintaining a straight alignment from the driveway, providing a turnaround area out of the garage between the house and the garage. With the smallest possible footprint, tried to preserve as much of the the lot in the rear for use of as a yard. To minimize the impact of the the impervious coverage and to minimize the. Or eliminate the dead area behind the garage and and the property line to the school, so maximize utilization of the yard. In this particular lot, we are virtually by the the lower side, the smaller size of the existing dwelling. We are increasing the impervious coverage here to the point where mitigation is required. The overall impervious coverage on the lot is compliant with your zone, however, it does trigger stormwater mitigation. We propose or we showed illustrated a a dry well at the rear of the yard that would bring, that would tie the roof leaders in. In reviewing the report from your zoning officer, we recognize that the the board or the township would look for. we recognize that the board or the township would look for alternate means in lieu of that, and we're happy to work with your engineer to come up with an acceptable mitigation design with your preference, should this application be approved. But the justification for the variances here again is we have a C one hardship with an undersized lot, undersized for area, and our, I'll say, combination C one, C two variances at the rear is to position the garage in such a way where it increases the utilization and usability of the driveway and garage without excessive asphalt to turn around and maintain usability of the rear yard. That's all I have, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mark. If anyone has any questions for either of our witnesses, happy to answer them at this time.
Board members, any questions?
I am curious about the, do you foresee, it's a one-car garage. Obviously, people could park in the drive going up to it. If there might be a second car, would they be able to? How would that work? Could they park in that turnaround or? It, I guess it's, I'm just curious. It's not germane or voting, but.
No, it's a very good point. Yeah, it is a good point. There would be adequate area alongside the garage door to park a second vehicle in that turnaround area, which would require the the car in the garage to either back out or you could, you know, do a little car jockeying around like I tend to do in my driveway from time to time when one of my sons parks there, but the, there would be adequate space to park a second vehicle behind the rear of the house. Depending on the size of the vehicle, you may even be able to still have some turnaround there, but we're trying to minimize the footprint. We don't want to provide excessive asphalt just for excess parking.
I don't know what the regulations are in that neighborhood in terms of overnight parking or, so that's part of what I was thinking about is, does that does that help in that case if there are two cars in that family?
Coordinates is, you're allowed to have parking space within the driveway, and they need to setback, so stacked parking is acceptable with single-family houses. So, good question.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions? All right, we'll open this up to the public. Claudia, anyone indicated their desire to speak?
There are no hands.
Okay, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you again. Similar to what you might have heard recently, another application, this is your classic C one for undersized lots in a neighborhood where the broad brush of R eight zoning missed all of these houses. They're all undersized, and unfortunately, anyone on that street minus four of the forty-five lots are going to need this lot area variance. You also heard from a C one or C two perspective, the placement of the rear garage, especially when you're backing up against an intense public use like a school makes sense. The reasons to have a buffer are a little different when you're not backing up to a use that needs a buffer from you so much as that we need the buffer from them. So using the garage like that makes sense and then helps with maneuverability to get in the back. Good. Thank you for your, for your time tonight. Any other thoughts or questions have, we'd certainly be happy to try to answer them.
Actually, I have one other question for Mr. Hirschberg. Do you find yourself using, reusing materials? Might you be reusing some of these materials on this site from the original house?
Most likely not. All of them have been or will be shipped to a warehouse in either Virginia or Massachusetts, where they'll go to different manufacturer facilities, where they'll go to, for example, to schools. If you've ever seen racetracks that have been more rubberized, if you will. If there was leftover paint, they do recycle paint. They actually resell different lumber boards. So I don't foresee myself reusing them necessarily within the house unless I buy new products that are lead certified or lead certified. But the materials itself will go for a new life once they get reprocessed through retraining and different skills workshops through their facilities.
I have a question, Mr. Hirschberg. Have you had any conversations with neighbors and see how they feel about teardowns and rebuilding in that neighborhood?
I've walked around a few of them, actually said hi. They've enjoyed watching the progress as the work has been done. A few people have commented just how much they've appreciated that we're doing good work by having retraining on site, having people look for the materials to be done. So people in the neighborhood have seemed to quit please. Sure, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, let's go into executive session. Are there any comments, questions, or emotion?
Chairman?
Yes.
I, we, I missed public comment or?
Oh, did I miss the public comment?
I'm not sure. There was nobody here. Thanks, Eric.
All right. Back to executive session. Okay, would someone like to ask a question or make them, Michael?
Yeah, I think this is a good application, good design. You know, the neighborhood is what it is. It's, there's been significant teardowns in this neighborhood. It's it's just the reality of many zones in Princeton where the zoning does not match what was there originally. There was a lot of smaller homes there, just like this. And, you know, it's just the fact that they're going to get torn down and bigger houses are going to get built, but within the zone. So it's a tough reality, but that's reality.
Thank you.
This, this was a predominantly Italian, old Italian neighborhood. And it is what it is. What's the zoning? No, we're not going downzone the area and cost people money, so. House by, it'll get torn down.
I move we accept this proposal.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Claudia?
Olson?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. And Michael, I agree with you. It's just the reality of these small lots, which are all over the place.
Well, lots and higher zoning is applicable, so you're going to get bigger houses.
Right.
And downs.
This one seems to have been, been, going to be done properly. Okay, so our last hearing tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. Hirschberg.
Thank you all for your time. Bye-bye.
Okay, our last hearing is case Z twenty-two dash one seventy-one. Karen, is everything in order?
Yes, it is. The noticing is correct. The board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. This, the address is three forty-three Snowden Lane, block fifty-seven oh five, lot ten point oh one in the R five zone. Derek, could you summarize your memo, please?
I apologize. Sorry about that. Ryan and Laura Armstrong are the owners and applicants, own the three forty-three Snowden Lane, seeking a four-area ratio for the expansion of an existing garage and a front yard setback for the prevailing front yard setback. Requirements eighty-three and the proposed is sixty-four, so property is located in the R five zone, and their applicants are seeking to add another bay to the existing garage. Sometimes these garages, motor courts like this are permitted. However, in this case, it's not permitted because there's not a minimum lot width of one hundred and twenty-five feet. So the garaging addition requires a front yard setback. Variance requires eighty-three proposed to sixty-four, and there's also a FAR variance. The FAR in this zone is twenty percent. Maximum in the existing is twenty-two point nine, and the proposed will be twenty-three point nine. So you may notice that the existing is over the required, and that is a function of the way the ordinances have changed over the last ten years, where previously garages were provided a exemption from FAR and attic space was also treated in a different manner than it is currently treated. And those, those ordinances were changed in two thousand sixteen after this house had been constructed. That's my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to ask, answer them. As you're aware, the C one is simple majority where the D variance requires a super majority, five out of seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. With one other person, I see the Armstrongs here, but can move Rob Bremel, our architect, onto the panel aside. I appreciate it. Again, as, as Derek said, this is, and as I said a few minutes ago, this actually is something different. Here we have an existing home and Ryan and Laura Armstrong and their family who are dealing with perhaps a poorly designed garage. We'll talk about the difficulties in getting to it, fitting things into there, and the need to make it usable. It is a small one-car garage in a motor court, and as Mr. Bridger said, this was built before the lot width requirements for motor courts, so it is already, from a width perspective, undersized. The home also was built at a, at a, at a location that slightly violated the prevailing setback, so we will be increasing that slightly, and in the, by the addition of about three hundred feet to make a unusable one-car garage, unusable for a family, you know, with bikes and kids and lawn equipment and things like that, to get a car in there to turn it into a two-car garage, where honestly, as a parent myself, with a one-car detached garage that is full of bicycles and shop equipment and not a car, that they didn't ask for the size that would really allow them to have two cars. They'll, they'll be able to get a car in there, and if they're tidy and neat, they might get their second one. It's sized for that. But more importantly, you'll see that this was originally built really close to the front door. When you approach the, to actually get a car into it, let alone make a K-turn, you'll see how close to that front door you get. So by rearranging it, they're actually stepping it out a little bit and making it more usable and maneuverable. I do still see, Rob, I guess in our, in the attendees list, are we able to move him over? Ah, there we go. So before we start, Rob, I'll ask you to, there we go, got your camera on. If you and Ryan and Laura can unmute yourself, I'll ask the board attorney to swear you all in.
Mr. Bremel and Mr. Mrs. Armstrong, you both swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So Ryan and Laura, if you want to just quickly introduce yourselves to the board, and we can start talking about the obstacles you've had since, since purchasing your house and why you brought in Rob and his team to do this design for you.
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Laura. My husband Ryan here. So we bought this home in two thousand and twelve. We have two children. We have James, who's seven, and we have Olivia, who's six, and they're both at Littlebrook School. Since buying our home ten years ago, we've been met with some limitations with our current garage, which is creating both an issue of safety and functionality, which Ryan just hinted at. From a functionality standpoint, the current garage, as it is, it does not fit two cars, truthfully, with, as Ryan mentioned, all the bicycles, scooters, lawn equipment, so on and so forth. We have not had even one car in that garage for quite some time, which, as you can imagine, creates quite a maze for the snow piles in the wintertime. But I guess more importantly, the lack of functionality is creating consequently a safety issue for our kids because we cannot pull our cars into the garage. Our kids are forced to play in what I call the neck of the driveway, which puts them closer to Snowden Lane. So if you are familiar with Snowden Lane, you know that when cars come, that you come quite fast. So, you know, our children playing sports in the driveway closer to that part of the road is just, you know, an obvious safety concern for us. So we are hoping that in doing this design that it will address that, so we can pull in at least one car and hopefully one day two, to give them more adequate space to play. And even in doing this, you'll meet our architect, Rob, in a minute. It was really important to us that we do this in a way that is truly in keeping with the neighborhood. We love Littlebrook. We, like I said, we've been here for ten years, and we want to do something that, you know, stays true to the neighborhood, function for us, but also you know, works well for everyone else, so.
Thanks, Laura, Ryan. As we had, as I have with our other applications, I'm going to share my screen and ask that we mark the set of exhibits that we provided previously as our evidence here tonight. I'll, I'm going to ask Laura and Ryan to step us through the first slides before introducing Rob and having him brought on, but just to orient the board here. Lauren, Ryan, this, this points to your lot here on, I guess the actual Snowden is covered by the change in zone between R four and R five, but this, this shows where your lot is on Snowden, near the corner of Overbrook?
Yes.
Again, here's the tax map showing your lot in comparison to, to the adjacent lots. Again, here's a overview, overhead view of the existing, what we call the motor court, your setback. And we'll show this a little bit more detail later, but of interest, the setback as compared to the, look, this is a prevailing setback situation. There are some that are further back, some that are closer. You'll notice the property next door is quite a bit closer to the street than, than existing or proposed. So Laura, you hit on this a little bit, but just to understand the reason here for kind of reconfiguring things. First off, this is a, an overhead view of your, of your house, looking at the side yard. And, you know, one of the things we, you started talking about is, you know, getting the kids kind of outside in a way that wasn't directing them towards the street. Can you maybe talk for a minute about how that works? I know this is a fenced-in area here where this aerial, area, arrow is pointed, but you want to talk about that briefly, about what those improvements will be and getting, you know.
Sure, sure. So I guess in addition to the driveway space that we're trying to gain for them, you can see that squared, it's very ideal for hockey, for basketball, for tennis, for all the things, my riding bikes, all the things my kids love to do, and when there are no cars in there, it's a wonderful space when our cars are home. They're always parked in the driveway, and that narrow section there is kind of where the kids are forced to ride their bikes and do their, the sports activities that they love. In addition to, though, you know, the, that extra garage space that we were hoping to gain, there is a request to put in a door, if you can see where the condenser units are in that picture. We are seeking to add a covered deck, so to speak, small, just so you can step out and head to the backyard, because in the wintertime, what you can't see are fences here, again, right in front of the condenser unit. So when it snows, in order to get my kids to the backyard, without going through my formal living room, we have to physically without going through my formal living room, we have to physically lift them over the fence. Because when it snows, you can no longer open the gate to get into the backyard. So whether it is the dog or the children, my husband is physically lifting them over the fence and then stepping over himself, which seems to be kind of a better use than going through the formal living room. Because as you can imagine, the formal living room, it was not designed to withstand snow and mud.
Yeah, I'd like to I'd like to save my back for just a few more years prior to, you know, lifting his kids over the over the fence, but.
So so have because you have this undersized garage here as part of the expansion of it into hopefully enough room for your cars. You're actually shifting it slightly as well and using some of that space so you can actually get to your backyard through a mudroom essentially.
Through a mudroom, yes.
Now, here's, I hopefully this this shows it well, but you from this approach, I guess we can you can see the existing garage and how close it is to your front door. So I mean, do you often, how often do you actually use it for cars now?
Oh, we don't.
We don't.
And so currently, then you'd park just in other parts outside of the motor court. Is that how it works?
Right. Yes, we park either directly in front of the garage and and right next to it, or we are trying to if we have, if we can beat the kids outside, move our cars back into the neck of the driveway again to keep them away from from Snowden.
Now, one of my first thoughts was, you know, and maybe this never came up because you don't really pull into the garage, but you know, to make that turning movement to get in there, you do come quite close to your front. I mean, as as have you ever hit that in in pulling in?
No, but you get you have to get very close in order to to make the angle to to get in.
And during during the wintertime, when the plow pushes the snow kind of into its piles, it creeps up into that kind of motor car area. So reversing straight out is is kind of
In the wintertime.
In the winter, it's too hard. You have to kind of do various kind of eight-point turns to kind of get around the the snowbank that kind of piles up in the wintertime.
Excellent. Well, I say excellent. I don't mean that. Thank you for your answer. Again, just some additional photos here of the, I think, I whenever this one on the left was taken, you could see probably your car parked where perhaps not there should be garage, but in the only place you can actually put a car and that's the the place where you perhaps your your children would perhaps rather be playing than in the front part of the driveway.
Right.
Correct.
Then here's a view from from the street of the the current facade. With that, I'm gonna switch things over and and ask Rob to introduce himself and we can talk about, you know, his design for for the project here.
Sure. Thanks, Ryan. My name is Rob Bramall. I'm the principal of Rob Bramall Architects. I am licensed in New Jersey and I've been asked by the Armstrongs to not only help design them, addition to satisfy that need of getting two cars into a garage and have a mudroom that they can actually enter into from the garage and from actually the motor court, but also to improve on the aesthetic of the home architecturally as an overall renovation to the house, improving just the overall architecture for it.
Actually, Rob, before we get to the the next slide, let me just, I know you're licensed in New Jersey. You want to just give a few extra sentences about your credentials. And then I'll ask the board to have you accepted as an expert on the record.
Sure. I have my Bachelor of Architecture, my Master of Architecture for Montana State University. I have an associate degree from Dean Junior College in Building Instruction. I have been licensed in a number of states for close to twenty-five years.
We'll accept you.
So I apologies for for, you know, interrupting, but we got to get that on the record. So you're saying you're the you the approach you're asked to take and things you're asked to to do with the for the Armstrong home.
Yep. So and again, overall, just it's it's a pretty straightforward addition to the house. It's the existing house has, it's obviously it's massing and it's and it's inherent existing structure. So really what we're doing is simply extending the massing of that existing garage only enough to accommodate the an entrance to a mudroom and two-car garage. Ideally, I would probably be asking for more, but in the interest of not increasing it more than necessary and limiting the FAR, I did it to a sort of a minimum standard of which garages are done today. Two typical nine-foot doors and usually I have three feet in between the doors, but I've reduced that down less than that to minimize the impact on the FAR. So it's really only asking for just enough to get the two cars in there. Ideally, we would have liked to have had a little bit more space to add bikes in there and a little bit more space for trash cans and other things like that. The the depth of the garage is not as deep as I normally would do, but I'm actually working off the existing depth of that garage. So I'm limited to its depth as well. So it even in the even in the in the depth of it, it's not as ideal as what I would normally do for a twenty-four-foot garage. So we're pretty much trying to be sensitive to how much we're adding to achieve what their desired program is. That view there is just a little bit of the architecture of what is there now. You can sort of see how the garage does and that that view right there is showing how we're adding to the building and the shaded areas, really what we're adding to it, reconfiguring the area with with the access to the mudroom door and the first door of the within the existing garage massing and then adding the single bay as a part of the addition.
Excuse me, just a quick question. What, oh, maybe you have it there, the interior dimension of the depth of the garage?
The interior depth of that garage is, well, I'm going to give you the I'll give you the overall outside dimension is twenty feet.
Outside dimension.
Yeah. And typically, we do twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So this next slide shows this in gray, the existing garage, excuse me, the existing motor court space, which remains unchanged. And this this blue part is the new part of the garage that we're talking about. And then this space here, this is a a cutout that's kind of coming out of the out of the house now that's uncovered space that we're actually kind of gaining some floor area from. Is that correct?
Yes.
So ultimately, the garage addition is three hundred nineteen square feet. And then this oddity down here is a kind of an area that's being enclosed.
That's the existing ports is being enclosed to gain some space and sort of improve on the architecture there. You can see those two, those two slides show it well.
Here we've got the elevations of the of the the garage's designs.
Yes.
Here, we tried to show here's, I guess, the the actually, maybe this was the chairman's question, at least partially, but you know, the overall square footage of the new revised garage shown here at five hundred twenty-five square feet of that three hundred nineteen, I think, is is new. And then we've overlaid a couple of things on here as well. One, you can see that that photo of where a car normally parks, which is actually still outside of the footprint and the motor court of where this garage will be. So by moving these inside, we'll, you know, kind of change the the layout, hopefully, of where these cars go. You also see overlaid on here are the existing prevailing and then the proposed setback that we're asking for. The house was already non-conforming at seventy-seven feet eight inches and we're moving it slightly closer to sixty-four feet and a half, but prevailing is actually behind that. It was already non-conforming for prevailing. We also wanted to show, you know, prevailing is is an average. It's a it's a formula. But to the extent that you know, we show where that line is and how little of the house, when you have a motor court impacts prevailing. It's it's not the mass of the house, which stays at its current location, but just a small portion of the garage that would encroach rather than the entirety of the house. You can also see just for context, in particular, the home next door is is quite set forward, which is not uncommon for the neighborhood. To go through the the variance conditions, you see the the setback, you know, from the existing non-conforming seventy-seven to sixty-four feet. There is the existing condition for the lot width. Remember that for a motor court back when this was built and before the Armstrongs purchased this, for a a home to have a motor court, you now have to have a certain amount of frontage. This does not comply by ten feet. So that's an existing condition. We'd be asking to continue. We've got the front yard setback. And then I know we noticed for twenty-two point nine nine, I know this isn't going to change the 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 world for everyone, but in preparing for this, we they did measure it and believe that the the floor area that we're asking for is is slightly smaller at twenty-two point seven seven. And Robin is his team assured me that that is all that we need to ask for, which is slightly smaller than what we presented on the plans. Again, still a variance condition, still a condition that needs five votes. It is a D variance. Also, would like to step back and just kind of just walk through with Rob. Unfortunately, just based on the layout of this home on the lot, is there another plan? I'm going to step back to a a survey or an area view here. But Rob, is there another place we could put this garage without removing the home? Or is there any way, unfortunately, to get something into the backyard with with what's there now?
No, I don't believe so.
So they are constrained by the existing house and essentially the rules that were started at the time that, as Mr. Bridger said, at the time did not count the garage as floor area. Unfortunately, they didn't, for whatever reason, design it in a usable location or size. And and now the Armstrongs are here to attempt to remedy that. To do that, we do need to see variances. I think you heard that these can be done without negative impact to to the neighborhood or the zone plan. It is a better use of of the space and with the existing location of the house, you really couldn't do this in any other way. It does allow them to then have a place to store their cars inside rather than than outside. As we were putting this together, I think things have settled down a bit, but, you know, it was at the height of at the end of the year, some some auto thefts in the neighborhood that were targeting cars. In fact, that were of the type that that the applicant has. So they're particularly sensitive as as many people are with with covering their vehicle and getting it inside. And this would allow that to happen. We do need the floor area variance. Again, as Mr. Bridger said, that requires five votes and and a showing of hardship and particular suitability here. I'm hoping that for a rather simple, small, kind of well-designed application that you've heard enough for that, we did consider bringing in a planner, but the the hope was that this was a compelling and simple enough explanation that you could see the difficulty practically in in the current home's design, the hardship in being able to build this in any other location and that how the the location, particularly in comparison to the other adjacent property, would not cause any type of impact or hardship on the neighborhood and would would rather advance some of the the goals of of zoning, you know, including better use of space. And in particular, again, getting getting these vehicles inside and having a maneuverable driveway that they can actually functionally use. Happy to answer any any questions the board might have for from our architect or or the applicant. And thank you for your consideration.
Board members, any question of the applicant, the or the architect? Okay. All right. Let's go to the public portion of the hearing. Claudia, has anybody indicated their desire to speak?
There are no hands.
No hands. Okay, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Kennedy, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I thank you again for your time tonight and for, again, to all of you, just as volunteers and to your staff, though, for doing this two weeks in a row. The the Princeton community really, I hope someone else tells you this, but appreciates your service particularly in in trying to get through these backlogs. It really means a lot to applicants like like all of them tonight and and last week. So thank you for that. I know it's not your time away from your family is is not your your first choice, but it's much appreciated. The the applicants here, as you as you heard, are trying to find a good-looking, functional way to to live their lives with their growing family and their automobile and their things. This, as you heard the architect say, is is kind of the minimum that you could even suggest to make it work. He would have made something larger, deeper, you know, have a bay and a two and a half bay so you can have some extra room for the bicycles. It's likely they're really gonna just have that one car in there and room for their their things. And that's a big difference for them. That 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 changes a lot. It means something in terms of usability that they can get in there. They can get their vehicle in there without, you know, K-turning into their front steps and that they have a place to keep their their vehicle safe and secure that doesn't push their children or the hockey game, the street hockey game onto Stone Lane, which it's been been doing. Again, really appreciative of your your time tonight and consideration of this and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Okay. Board members, any more? Any questions of the owner? The attorney or the architect? Okay, let's go into executive session and discuss this and come to an agreement. I actually, so I'll speak, it's a reasonable application. I think there's a good explanation of the of the prevailing setback in relationship of this house to the adjacent house and the garage. And and I think, in my opinion, it's reasonable. To
I agree with you.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think that for a house of this size and where it's located to build it originally with just one garage doesn't really make a lot of sense. And with its current situation and that that court being there already, it just seems very logical. And the design and the limitations they put on the design to begin with, in order to try and make it fit as much as possible, I think, is admirable. So I would support it.
I just have one question for the board before you take a vote. The applicant has asked you for C one hardship. If the board feels it meets that C one criteria, I'd appreciate if you could articulate that. There's also C two as an alternative. C one hardship refers to a shape of a property or topographical condition that is affecting the property. It's the lot and the house are compliant with all bulk requirements. So since I'm the scrivener for your resolutions, I want to understand if you feel it's a C one. What's your interpretation then of what that hardship is?
If it helps, the way we presented it was that those bulk variances are existing conditions. We are, we are on prevailing setback going a little bit closer, but the the way we approached it as a hardship that, again, this helps or to as part of our explanation is that the the motor court being there and the width of the lot is a pre-existing non-conforming condition, as is the front setback. We are we are increasing the the setback variance a bit, but there's unfortunately no other direction that the garage could go. So that's what we the hardship is the existing design and location of the home. the hardship is the existing design and location of the home didn't make it possible to to go any other direction. We couldn't go back.
Yeah. Just a question. In your memo, you say the proposed garage placement doesn't comply with the neighborhood character motor court provision. Is it the placement of the garage? Are you saying it's the motor court itself that is noncompliant?
It's the lot width requirement. That precludes the motor court. That's the variance. It could be a complying motor court except for a lot with requirement, I believe.
Yeah, the placement of the house is not square on the lot as well, although it looks like if it was square, the new addition would encroach in the setback, but because it is canted, it it does create a, you know, a challenge that they're trying to address. And this really, you know, it's an existing condition.
I would agree with that.
Any other questions?
Yes, please, Stephen.
No, I'm ready to vote.
Keep calm. Is there any other, any other? Michael?
No.
Okay. All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll accept it.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Okay, Claudia.
Olson?
Yes.
Ten?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes. But the Karen gets explanations she needed.
I I I understand what you're saying. Thank you. I understand. I got it. Thanks.
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Yes.
German Cohen?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much and have a good night. Thanks again. Thank you for meeting twice this month. It really, it's a burden on you guys and but much appreciated.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I guess we're wrapped, so we'll adjourn until next month. Have a good month.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night.